It's the May 20th Board of Directors Meeting for Addison Northwest School District. Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes or additions, deletions to the agenda? Okay, all in favor of accepting as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. All right, that brings us to public communication. Do we have any communication from the public tonight? Stephanie?
Hi. I didn't add this to my board report because I wasn't sure what was going to happen, but we talked a month or so ago about new student reps and I am very pleased to welcome two of the three student reps that came today. Una Fonte, who is going to be representing the 10th grade next year. Reagan Kehart will be one of two 11th grade reps and the other rep is Ben Heskey.
Welcome.
And we'll continue as a talk group.
Welcome, thank you very much. We look forward to having you.
You're gonna have to get a bigger table.
I guess so.
We'll find space. Great. Any other public communication tonight? Okay. Ooh, yes.
Just wanted to read something I prepared. Chris Kehart. I love Power School. I never realized how much I relied on the information I provided until Jump Rope is deployed. With Power School, you are presented with a 1 through 100 traditional grade in a weekly snapshot email. If you're interested, you can go for a deeper dive. You can drill down for specifics on the individual assignments that are also graded 1 through 100. Students, parents, grandparents, and teachers understand this grading system. Starting this year, middle schoolers get their grades through Jump Rope, presented as a 1 through 4 grade. Not only does this grading system have less numbers and therefore less specificity, but also the grades are a decaying average. A grade at the beginning of the year weighs less than at the end of the year, making it very difficult for parents and students to understand the current status, much less try to predict a path of progress. Because a lesson may be taught before a standard that is based upon is taught, some assignments have a maximum grade of 3. That grade gets averaged in as a 3 out of 4? Not sure. Even though the student may have achieved the best score that was allowed in that assignment. Average just one of these grades and it becomes mathematically impossible to achieve a 4 at the end of the year. I have not found any other parent, teacher, or student that prefers a new method. I don't think that we should be putting our kids through this new fad of educational experimentation. Maine rolled this system out statewide several years ago, and since then, almost all the schools in Maine have rejected and reverted back to the traditional 1 through 100 grading system. No state outside of Maine in Vermont has attempted widespread deployment of this 1 through 4 grading system. Without Maine, we are annihilated. I would like to ask the administration or the board to present a survey to the parents of 8th graders and the students of 7th graders as well that are using this new system and get a feel for how this is working for the parents, students, and teachers. That's my request. Thank you.
Any other public communication? Okay. All right, that brings us to Board Education. Student-centered learning update from Ferrisburg Central School.
All right. When in doubt, always unplug. Hi, I'd like to thank you all for giving me this opportunity, this last opportunity to present because certainly student-centered learning and personalization of education is very near and dear to my heart. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about what Ferrisburg does to really encourage that model. There are several different models. There's, you know, there's the full personalization model, which is the Montessori, which I'm sure you're familiar, it's been around since, well, it's been around for 100 years. The big picture schools with Dennis Lickie and his work that he started in Providence that really for high schoolers is a full personalization model. Here in Vermont, we have a lot of work with multiple pathways, dual enrollment, the extended learning opportunities that high schoolers can enjoy. When I look back at elementary education, I think we've sort of been doing a lot of this all along. Not that we're sending our kids off to do an internship here and there necessarily, but a lot of the real things that promote personalization, I think, are also part of elementary ed and have been for many years. And it's one of my favorite little memes there where it says, "For a fair selection, everybody has to do the same task. Please climb the tree." And of course, you know, the monkey's going like, "Yeah, okay, this is great," but the elephant's saying, "Ooh, I don't know if I can do that." And Einstein said, "Everybody is a genius, but if you judge a fish in its ability to climb a tree, it will live its whole life believing that it's stupid." So I think that we sometimes, I think that publicly, as a nation, we very often measure just two things. We measure mathematical aptitude and we measure English language arts as an aptitude. And we forget about a lot of the other aptitudes that really do make some of our kids be absolute geniuses. And I think personalization or student-centered learning, I think it's very hard to define, but I think when you see it, you know what it is. And it's this synergy of thinking about learning styles, thinking about preferences, finding people's passions and their interests, and what is their voice, and how do they make choice? And what's the personal connection that they have with their learning community? And also, I think it's really about equity. I think we have to recognize that all kids have gifts and have talents, and it's about equity for us to really find out not only what their gifts and their talents are, but to figure out how we can use those gifts and talents to help them be successful in all areas. So we have some various structures at FCS that support personalization. We have flex periods in all classes except for kindergarten. Kindergarten flex period, choice time, is a little less academic, but they're still doing some choosing there. But during the other flex periods, it is an opportunity for the child that needs to have maybe some more math time or wants to, you know, they finished their, they finished everything, they're great, and they're like, "Oh, I want to write a story." It's like, "Okay, you do that story." I mean, first graders can do that, second graders can do that, and all ages, you know, can do that as well. It's also about having highly articulated systems for multi-tiered, both academic and social-emotional learning. So we have very differentiated Tier 1 instruction, and we spend a lot of time focusing on making sure that we're meeting the needs of all students. But we also have an intervention model that if you need a bump in something, we have a pretty highly defined process as to how you access that extra help through our EST and our SST programs. And then, of course, we do have Tier 3 instruction through special education. And one of the things that I really advocate for is that we have these homeschool liaisons in all of our buildings that do such an incredible job of making sure that not only the kids can be connected to the school systems, but that their parents can be connected as well. And I think that that is hugely important, that the families have to feel like they have a connection to your school system. And it's also about various dispositions and values that you hold as a learning community that would support personalizations. And at the heart of that is that all students can be successful, but they're not all going to arrive at the same place, at the same time, and in the same way. Did that just really go off? Hello? There we go.
Is the cable secure in the?
Ah, that's the issue.
You thinking good?
There you go.
That's a total fail.
Bill! We always call Bill when we need anything technological. There we go. And I think that working... Working with families is critical. That is really pinky.
Billy doesn't like that slide.
I guess not. So we'll move on to the next one. The idea that everybody is individual, but they're part of a whole. And, you know, that's what inclusion is about, is that everybody has their special parts to their lives, but they're part of a whole, and they need to be part of the whole, whether that is, you know, through our star jars. Our little star jars there that they fill and they get their, it's part of our PBIS programming, but they're not filling the star jar for themselves. They're filling the star jar for their whole class, so their whole class can enjoy, and ultimately so that the whole school can enjoy, you know, a celebration. That's... Wow. Also, the fact that we are not just educating the mind, we're educating the body as well. We do it through ABL in our kindergarten gym classes. We also do it through, you know, whether it's like teaching lifelong physical activity that they can enjoy forever, or whether it's doing like brain breaks and doing yoga in, you know, first grade. You know, just really making sure that we're having healthy children, both in body and mind. Being personally responsible for the community that you're at. They do the recycling, they do the composting, they do the reading to younger kids, whether it's 6th graders reading to 2nd graders or 2nd graders reading to pre-K. They're part of the community and they have a responsibility for that learning community and for the environment. And it's about student leadership. Our Student Council has taken on the role of running our Friday morning, Friday morning, once a month, we have an assembly that's, you know, highlights something special in the school. And then also, our celebrations this year have all been designed by the Student Council. And so they take a real role in that, they take a responsibility in doing that. Or they do fundraising for the Big Change Roundup or something like that. They put it together, and it's the students that are doing it. Sure, they have adults that are guiding that, but they have student voice in that. And they're always coming to my office, "Dr. Moody, can we try this?" And it's like, "Well, you can give it a, bring me a plan and we'll talk about it," but, you know, they're so interested in doing something for their community, which is kind of very cool. Tapping into student interest, that gets into supporting it with really what is personal about them. If they suddenly come in with an idea of, "We love this story and we want to share this story, somehow we're with our school," and it's like, "We want to do this mural." It's like, "Okay, let's see if we can work that out." Or they decide, "This little group of 2nd grade girls are going to write a story and then they're going to like do it as a play." And they get so excited about learning and about writing, and they get lost in that. Or a student that wants to learn about, you know, ancient cultures by building something outside, because that fits that student's interests. It's also a lot of, we hear a lot about project-based learning, and I think that the project-based learning that goes on in certainly grades 3 to 6, not quite as much as grades K-2, but certainly 3 to 6, they do a tremendous amount of project-based learning, whether it is, you know, when they find out, when they have to find out about colleges, and so they do this whole thing where they have to like call up colleges and find out, you know, ask them questions and get information. And then they present their colleges to their parents at night because they've done this big project, which is very cool. Or that they're doing like bridge projects, and then they present that. There's just a lot of project-based learning that is not your standard, you know, textbook worksheet learning. That's really, I see very little textbook worksheet learning in our school, and that is something that I think makes our learners just really excited about learning. And it's integrated. So like the 2nd graders, they learned about endangered species. And then in their art class, they went ahead and they did these great, like they made, they drew it, they were able to put it onto a piece of material, they made quilts, quilt sections, and they presented it to the whole school. And it was just something that, you know, the, because the art teacher spoke with the 2nd grade teacher, they kind of got it together. And, you know, that sort of synergy that we talk about got everybody involved. And learning by doing, I think that's hugely important, whether it's learning by doing in the classroom or learning by doing outside of the classroom and outside of the school. Everybody has their own way of learning by doing, and if we can offer lots of opportunities, I think we're going to spark interest with almost all of our students. I'd say all of our students. I'd go there. And having relevant curriculum. So, you know, when the doctor from Middlebury came down and talked to them, you know, they all put on their, they all got little doctor caps there and, you know, got to work with that, but they were like, "Oh, this is really exciting," and, you know, they were teaching them about stuff they're going to need to know. Or just the fact that the amount of learning that goes on just in the FCS gardens, you know, whether it's the planting of the seeds first thing in the year, the going out and planting the plants out in the garden, you know, having different families participate in, you know, volunteering all summer long and watering and weeding, and then harvesting, and just seeing that what they're going to eat for the fall, they created. That's a huge lesson for kids to learn. I was talking with somebody just the other day, and they were like, "Yeah, kids don't know plants anymore, they just, they don't even know what a tomato is." And I was like, "Mm-mm, mm-mm." Ferrisburg kids knew what a tomato is. Because they really do. They've learned so much about sustainability through the programming that we have at Ferrisburg, which kudos to Judy Elson because she is the heart of that program. There are some things that really support personalization of learning, and one thing is really one-to-one computing. It really, it's impossible to imagine that we could have done quite as much as we have done without having that. It allows kids to work on math if that's what they need, while another kid is working on learning all the, you know, the capitals of various countries throughout the world. You know, it does give you that flexibility. It's something you have to balance as an educator and as a school system, and I think we found a very good balance for that. But it certainly helps. The roar, I don't, if any of you ever get an opportunity, it's on our website, click it in. There are some, the kids are just hilarious when they do the roar and, you know, there's Mary Beth's cleaning tips and their interests that they have, and they just go and they really rock it. I am so proud of those kids. And we do after-school opportunities that at this point are volunteer opportunities, but, you know, you'll have some kids that love sports, but you'll have some kids, they want to do Minecraft. And we have parent volunteers that will come in and will help them learn about computing and programming through Minecraft. Or we had, for two years, we've had folks from Middlebury College come down and do some science club with after-school kids. And I got to tell you, it was fascinating, the first year that we did it, almost all boys and like one girl. Second time that we did it, we had like twice as many girls in there as we did guys, and it was really nice to see, "Oh, yeah, this is fun and I want to do this, I want to participate." We do have the Ferrisburg Children's Theater, which is a fabulous program, and some kids want to do like running. So we have the mini-milers for K-2. And finally, I think you can have the best personalization in there, and if you don't have some fun in your education, they're not going to be nearly as engaged as if you do. And I think that's another thing that we do very well at FCS, is we have a good time with each other because we made that community, and the kids feel responsible for that community. And the synergy is that they are really invested learners. So I would say that is how we do personalization, student-centered learning at FCS. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I knew what you were doing. Did anybody have any questions for Beth? Thank you very much.
Come and join us anytime, that's what I would say.
Okay, so we are up to Superintendent's Report.
All right, so the first thing I'm going to review is the Continuous Improvement Plan because we have an action on that tonight. And we're on a roll using the projector, I figure we might as well just keep going. So the Continuous Improvement Plan was sent as part of your packet, and I'm sure that you've all read every page. So this is the extended version, and I can sort of review in the template form where you can find the most important information, but Kim and I prepared a presentation to just review it at a sort of 30,000-foot view to get the gist of what it's really saying because it's, this is really all about three primary goals, and we'll talk about what those three goals. And again, go back to the context. Why do we have to do this? Why is it presented this way? And what is this really saying? So we'll go over the broad overview first and then dig into some of the details if you have questions. So you remind me, do you want to do 2, 3, and 4? Just in the 3, 4, 5. So due to federal accountability, we're required to do a Continuous Improvement Plan annually. So that came through the change to ESSA, which is, stands for the Every Student Succeeds Act, which replaced No Child Left Behind back in 2015. And ESSA is, holds all states accountable to prepare students for college and modern careers. So that was really the definition that had changed from No Child Left Behind. No Child Left Behind looked at everything from a grade level expectation point of view. So it was all about meeting your grade level expectations. Every Student Succeeds, ESSA starts from the end goal. We want students to be successful in college or in modern careers, and then it works backwards from there to say, "Well, then what would we need to do in high school, in middle school, and in primary school to make sure that kids are on track to be college and career-ready when they graduate?" And that came from decades of research showing that students weren't prepared for college, even students who graduate believing they're, you know, at the top of their class, go on to college and have to take remedial courses. So it was really about thinking about what had changed, what was rigorous in terms of prep for college and modern careers, meaning that how technology has really influenced teaching and learning and careers, and how that had to be infused into our instructional programs. So through that comes to the state's funding in the form of the CFG. And annually, we have to apply for our CFG funds and our IDA funds for special ed. And so this is the plan that allows us to submit for those funds. So then, from the federal level to the state level, the state has to write a plan for how they're going to administer ESSA at the state level. Is this the slide you want to do? Or is it the next one?
If you've got momentum, you go. I'm here to support.
We're tag teaming, but we didn't rehearse. So in a moment, Kim will tell you more. Vermont then wrote a plan, it had to be submitted to the feds and was approved, and Vermont created the Ed Quality Standards and these other sort of metrics to how are we going to evaluate our implementation of ESSA at the state level. So we have our education quality standards, we have the, and then at the Vermont level, they do the annual snapshot, they look at all of our data annually to see if we're making progress towards ESSA and hitting those benchmarks. They do a more in-depth review called the Integrated Field Review, where they're going into school districts, spending time with teams from other schools to really look more comprehensively at the things that are happening in your school and district, and give you qualitative feedback on what's observed. They look at our Continuous Improvement Plan, and then they decide if we need comprehensive supports or equity supports. So back when we had No Child Left Behind, your member schools were designated as failing schools. In this model, you might be identified as needing comprehensive or equity supports. We don't know yet because we haven't gotten any of our data back from the state because of that whole data debacle with the new integrated data system. We're uploading all of our data into this new data system at the state level, and it hasn't gone well. It's been all year that we've been waiting for our feedback and our data from them. So we still haven't got it.
We still haven't gotten our Sback results yet either.
We don't know. Yeah, so from last year, not this year.
Last year's like state level. We got our individual student level, but the state level information hasn't been released.
It's all because it's logjammed into this new data system that's not going well, the state longitudinal data system. So we're doing our part, but we right now don't know where we lie in, you know, reference to any other school systems across the state. We may be identified for comprehensive supports or equity supports, we don't know, it'll be a surprise. So we had to write our plan and leave a placeholder for a fourth goal. They said, "Keep it to three goals, but leave a placeholder for a fourth goal. If you're identified as needing comprehensive or equity supports, you'll write a fourth goal specific to that outcome, whatever it is." So. I'm going to turn it over to you now.
So to revisit kind of our EQS, our Education Quality Standards, they're broken into five major categories, and it was through the lens of these five categories that we then wrote our Continuous Improvement Plan. And as Sheila mentioned, the plan will be linked to the funding. So that the way they want us to write the grant is if they backtrack to look at, "You're asking for money to support this," if it's not, if that "this" is not identified in your plan, they're not going to approve it. They're going to come back to it and say, "This isn't linked to your goals." So they're trying to build a really equitable system in the sense of, "You're defining where you want to go, you're going to put the money where you say you're going to go, and we're going to check and balance that." So that's kind of the way they're transforming this. And all of it is around these five quality standards. For us, the majority of our work and emphasis is really going to be targeted at these top two categories. Our academic proficiency work, which has been a big lift at our high school, and we're hoping to also kind of make it more equitable across the whole system, K-12. And then the personalization piece that both Beth and Kathleen and Matt have all talked about, and they've come in to demonstrate what's happening at the elementary levels, likewise Stephanie has spoken, what's current practice at the high school around personalization, and trying to just build that as we move forward. So we're going to talk a little bit about our goals and kind of the broad sweep in terms of where we want to head for next year. We'll also talk about the safe and healthy schools. This district has a really strong, safe and healthy school component when you're thinking about the social-emotional learning. We excel, I'm overwhelmed by how well this category is addressed in this district. So our hope is that next year, we're going to continue that trend. We're not going to lose that traction while we're trying to build more strength in our other two earlier areas of proficiency and personalization. We want to maintain that same depth of experience around social-emotional learning while still building the other two. Any questions on that? Were you with me so far? Sometimes I talk quickly. High-quality staffing is obviously a requirement. We want that, none of this happens if we don't have really high-quality staffing and continue to build strong professional development opportunities for our staff. So it's kind of embedded in what we have in our other three categories. Likewise, the priority investment is around... Likewise, the priority investment is around being able to financially support the work we're doing. And specifically for us, we want to focus a little bit on systems, like our use of data systems to then inform our proficiency learning and our personalization. And kind of beefing up our ability to use data in a way that informs instruction. So that's how we're going to get at focusing around our investment priorities. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think I have enough.
So our big three goals, again, this is kind of the big overarching. And if you need more detailed specificity, it's in that document in front of you. The big three goals are around proficiency, students reaching academic measures of achievement. Around safe and healthy schools, so continuing to build both safety aspects and social-emotional aspects to support our learners. And then around clarifying our district vision and goals as it's developed through our CIP process. So just being really coherent in connecting the three pieces.
What goal three are you talking about? Budget investment priorities? Is this money you're talking about? Okay, thanks.
Either way. Okay. So we're, our current comprehensive assessment system includes both classroom-based, so at that very tier-one instructional level to inform and, inform our practices and instruction with students. And that is articulated sometimes through common program, like Bridges Assessments and Mathematics. Sometimes it's a little more overarching, like at the high school level, they have some common assessment pieces that might go through all English classes. So that local assessment, classroom-based assessment piece, it varies depending on your grade level. But that's a part of the component, is being able to track that information. We have district-wide assessments. The vast majority of the district-wide assessments are kind of a, what we would call a universal screener, which is kind of your, make sure everybody takes this base-level assessment. So for us, it would be like an A reading or an A math, which live in a fast bridge resource. That's an online digital resource. And all kids take that assessment. And that allows us to flag kids if they aren't meeting that bare minimum requirement. Okay, nine times out of ten, those kids are already identified. We already know those kids need extra supports. But this is, screeners kind of work as a, as a way to make sure we're not losing anybody in the track. And if a kid gets flagged, you want to revisit. For our system at the K-six level, we do what we call first looks and second looks. And that language might be familiar to those of you who are parents at the K-six level. First looks are your screeners. That's everybody gets the flag, right? Anybody going to get caught in that sweep? Then the second look are the ones that, oh, this one kiddo didn't really do well in this area. I want to dig deeper. So then we do what we call diagnostic assessments, where we dig deep to try and find out more about that student's learning and their gaps. And then we target their intervention, their support, based on what we learned from that diagnostic. We also have state-level assessments. That's going to be your Sback, your fitness gram that's happening at the PE level, science kneecaps, or, sorry, science Sbacks now, the science assessment. So those are, everybody's taking them. And the vast majority of them are considered mandatory by the state to give us data. And then you have national assessments. And our national assessments could be your state-level assessments, if you want to use that, because many of them are normed across the country. But they also could be your SATs, your ACTs, those assessments that might not be everybody broad-sweeping, but they are at a national level in terms of how they're normed and what kind of information they give us about student learning. Want to add to the assessment page? Any questions about assessment?
I'm just going to back up a little bit too. I'll just go back, sort of, like, this is a lot of information, and I'm really sensitive. But at the end of the day, what we're really just saying is, we're all here. And everything we do is to improve the academic achievement of our students. And, and to make sure they experience a safe and healthy school environment. And that we spend our money wisely and track our performance toward the goals that we've identified. So we say, we think if we do this, these things will happen. And then we track back to find out, yep, we invested money and time in that particular strategy, and we did meet the goal, or we did not meet the goal. And therefore, we have to adjust the goal and change the, adjust the strategy in order to meet the goal. I think we have the right goals. It's our strategies where we have to sort of test and make sure that what we're doing has paid off. So when, when Kim dives into the comprehensive assessment system, these are the things we're looking at to make sure that those things are happening. So that's one of the ways that we look at that. Because at the end of the day, that's what we're here for. So, when we think about other data sources, what are other ways that we can reach out and grab information to help us learn about all of those other components that we talked about in the continu-, in the school quality standards? Surveys. So, we were supposed to, I feel like here, this is going to be a familiar story to you. The state was meant to administer a statewide survey, a statewide climate survey this year. And about January, we learned they were not going to be successful in launching that survey. So, at the administrative team level, we thought, well, we can just let it go. Wait till next year, when hopefully the state will get that to us. But we felt, well, it's important for us to have something. It'll be a baseline. It won't be perfect. It won't be exact. It won't be a direct match with what the state will do. But let's get something out the door. And I don't know if you know anything about surveys, but you want to have, like, surveys where they vetted some of the questions and they, you know, high-quality surveys. There's a process to developing a decent survey. So we didn't really have a lot of time to develop the survey. So they, there was a work group on our admin team that identified the PBIS survey as, as a, as one just to put our toe-dip into the water for doing something this year. So, it's not perfect. We did, it's not what we're going to end up with, but it was something where we could at least get some information for this year. So you saw that. You'll see a new survey next year that I think will be more comprehensive. And we do annually the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And that's another great tool for us to learn, especially about safe and healthy schools and some of the other components of those quality standards. So that's another data source. And then, like we said, there's the quality review process where we might have visitors. We might have the Integrated Field Review. We had that this year. So we won't have that again next year. That's pretty comprehensive. I don't know if the state will be able to continue to do that. It takes a lot of resources to, to make that last. But other than the Integrated Field Review, they do do, or they should do, or they will do, the annual report card that gives us a overview of our assessment results, our graduation rate, how well we're implementing flexible pathways and PLPs. And based on the college and career readiness measures, how well are we doing at preparing our students towards those ends? So, the state will give us feedback on that as well. So we look at our local assessments. We look at our results. We look at our statewide assessments. We get a summary. We get a report card at the state level to get that feedback. So it's a check and a balance. And this is kind of how all of the pieces fit together. I think this is the last slide. So. So these are the five areas up here of the quality standards. And here are all the ways that we get information about that. The annual snapshot, the Integrated Field Review. And that helps us to develop our next iteration of the continuous improvement plan in response to the things that we've learned, and it's just a cycle that's ongoing. So here, we didn't have, I would say we didn't have a comprehensive development process for the CIP. So we worked as hard in developing our process for developing a CIP as we did in developing it as a product. And so we look forward to, I think earlier in the year, didn't you speak a little bit to how we were going to develop it, what are, what our data sources were going to be? Yeah, so our idea is that we don't want this to be something that we have to do once a year. We just get together and we produce it, and it's sort of meaningless, but it's a hoop, it's a compliance factor. But rather, that we're this data-driven decision-making entity, and we're using the sources of data that we've identified in an ongoing way to contribute to this plan. The surveys is a great example. We just finished this plan. We're doing the surveys now. So that's our baseline for next year as we start going forward. We'll get our Sback data. We'll, we'll learn what the state has to say through the annual report card. Those are pieces of data we're going to get throughout the year. And we're going to be incorporating that into our dialogue and our discourse so that we're informing the plan for next year going forward. So it's ongoing. It's continuous. That's the C part of the CIP. So, if you look more closely at the plan, you'll see that in the area of academic proficiency, that's where the equity outcomes come out. And there, we're going to be focused on beliefs, systems, and structures that lead to equitable outcomes in our district. So we're talking about equity as, as a whole district. And we're really starting to think about, what does that, what does that actually mean? And what does that look like? And what are some sources perhaps of inequitable belief systems or structures that we had in place that might be contributing to the inequitable outcomes for our students? So that's a big concept that we're going to be talking about next year with staff. And then in terms of professional development, we'll be focusing on instruction to reach all learners. We do that now. That's a lot of that differentiation you might heard, heard it called before, or universal, thank you, the universal design for learning, where we think about how to design lessons that don't have barriers for kids, that all kids can kind of access the learning. So it's really a focus on instructional design and implementation. And we'll be doing that at the high school through some coaching that we'll be getting at the, from the Great Schools Partnership and from the Teachers Development Group. And we're talking about ways to build in more coaching for the K-through-six teachers as well. We want to ensure that the written and delivered curriculum is in alignment with the standards. I know that sounds silly, but we're not going to, our results aren't going to, we're not going to do well on state and national assessments if we don't have curriculum aligned to state and national standards. It just makes sense. So we want to make sure that we have that strong alignment. So those are some pieces that we'll be doing. In terms of personalization, we have a lot of things in place, as you've now heard at the last couple of meetings. We have a lot of great practices in place. I think it's a matter of pulling those pieces together and building cohesion across the district. I think there are pockets of excellence, and we really need to study those and think about how to bring them together. So those are things like the PLP, Exhibitions of Learning, Goal Setting, Student Goal Setting. So doing those things with fidelity. That's what we want to be focused on in the future. That's the only goal we really have under personalization for next year. So when we think about the third, high-quality staffing, we have a strong mentoring program in place. We want to continue with that. We want to develop, did I miss something? Well, no, just on the high-quality staffing, I did meet with Lynn, and we had a few edits to add in. Yep, I think I got that.
Sheila?
All right. I'm going to let Kim talk about the high-quality staffing. What was your question, Tom?
Well, I, is now a good time, or is?
Is it about equity or personalization?
It's about the whole thing.
Okay.
So, so I, I can wait until you guys are done, or?
No, it's fine.
Because I just, I have a couple of kind of global, more global questions.
Actually, if you don't mind, I, I have some questions too, so could we go to the end?
Want to hear the end?
Yeah, that's fine. No, totally, totally.
Okay, so I'm going to let Kim talk about high-quality staffing.
And I apologize that addition that you have doesn't have these most recent edits because we were just able, able to do this at the tail end of last week. So I'll make sure you have the most updated version right after this meeting. But I just wanted to jump in on the strategies under our Section Four of Safe and Healthy Schools.
Well, we're not there yet. We were just on high-quality staffing, sorry. So mentoring and PLCs are the two things that we'll be doing for high-quality staffing. So that's Section Three. So the mentoring program is something we already have, so we'll be continuing that. But the PLCs, that's another acronym, because we haven't thrown out enough at this meeting. So that's Professional Learning Community, and it's how teachers work together. So when we have in-service time, when we have time to get together, it's, it's a focused time for teachers to focus on, say, student work or instructional practice, where they can come together and work as professionals around a particular dilemma or need. And it's a, it's a structure that you can provide around that kind of learning community so that there are processes and protocols that teachers can follow, so that you get a lot out of it. So, those are two things that we'll be focusing on there. Now, the safe and healthy schools. So that's Goal Two. And you were editing that with Lynn last week, so I'll let you speak to that.
I apologize.
No, that's all right.
So just a few things. We wanted to make sure that in the listing under that first strategy, it speaks to PBIS. It speaks to restorative practices strategies. We wanted to make sure we included CPI work, which is some work that the district has really invested in.
Sorry, CPI?
Yep, CPI.
Stands for?
Yes. Did you catch that?
Crisis Prevention.
Thank you.
Crisis Prevention.
Not to be confused with the CIP.
Right. Again, it's part of kind of building our repertoire of our teachers' toolkits of how to create these safe and healthy school environments. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that was going to be articulated as well. And then we're, we're thinking about, or dabbling with, restorative practices has been something that's been really well-received at the 712 level. And we're, we're thinking about growing at K, K-through-12. So that's something that's in conversation as we're developing our plan.
And then the last thing under that is just to continue to develop our dedicated intervention instruction. So we have a lot of intervention blocks in our schools. So we want to continue to build that system of supports for students. And then last but not least, is that investment priority area. And our focus next year, as I was already saying, in terms of cycling and developing this plan in an ongoing way, we want to rely more on our data and do a better job accessing what we have available. So, our strategy is about monitoring student progress across the system to make sure that our investment priorities are supported by data. So, questions?
Tom, go ahead.
You first. Okay. Thank you. This was very helpful. I'd just like to say, I really appreciate. We've been hearing bits and pieces about continuous improvement plans for about a year and a half. And I've, and this is, this is a, this is a clear discussion of what it is, and it's deeply appreciated, and, and it, there's clearly a lot of useful tools or, or processes that I think are actually really exciting. I'm curious, when you, when you put together these goals and reading through the document, the educational quality standards are kind of linked, are filtering through, throughout. But what was the process by which these three goals became, the things in red, became, like, what's the relationship between the educational quality standards and the language that's in those three goals? Why that? Where did that come from? Who articulated that?
Well, it came from some of the data that we've received. So when we got information back from our Integrated Field Review, one of the really glaring pieces was that we needed to spend more time in making a comprehensive curriculum that was focused around proficiency-based learning. So that was one of the, the feedback pieces that came to us. Various resources to include our own local data also informed that decision-making. We were looking at where, where are our gaps, where are kids not being successful? And so we know that that had to be a priority in terms of academic growth. Your education quality standards, the first one is really about academia. And that's where proficiency-based learning gets, gets funneled. Like, that's where the academia lives. And then personalization kind of encompasses that, like, they go hand-in-hand. The personalization is the way that kids can then access that academia. And how do we make it specific to their learning? And information about personalization to inform that?
Well, I would even say there's a- Well, I, I would even say there's a, there's an actually even shorter answer to that too, in that the state said basically, these are the, these are the three goals you're gonna have this year.
Yeah, that did, yeah.
We want a goal around academic proficiency. We want a goal around safe and healthy, healthy schools. And we want a goal around investments priorities. So?
That's, that is such a curious.
We had already done all the five areas. So we had already done all the work around equity, personalization, safe and healthy schools, um, and so forth. And then we layered the three required goal areas on top of our?
Okay, that makes sense. That makes sense, yeah.
So I think that might make it work.
Can I follow up with it, with it related but slightly different?
Do yours and then we'll move on.
Um, so, so I was a little bit unclear, a- and that, that helps clarify a lot of the way this, this is laid out. I was curious and, and a little bit unclear about some of the root, root cause analysis results, um, where they came from. And, and, and so the one that really struck out at me is in goal number two, students experience a safe and healthy environment for learning in section four, Safe and Healthy Schools. Um, uh, the, you've got this whole child focus in the focus area, but the root cause analysis was really about tiers of instruction operating as silos, not enough communication and progress monitoring for results, which I totally believe that, that exists. I really appreciated in Dr. Brody's um, presentation that, that there's, that there's integration going on and less siloization. But how, but I wasn't clear, wh- the connection between the vision articulated there and, and, and why siloization is the, is the root cause as opposed to something else?
Well, I think silos work against a whole child focus, right? I mean, I think that that's when we operate in silos, when we have, you know, committee meetings that, you know, aren't necessarily talking to each other, you know? These individuals are getting together to talk about this aspect of the student. And then those folks are getting together to talk about some other aspect of student learning. And there's not a lot of direct correlation between those pieces. Or, uh, from my vantage point across schools, um, we're not focused on the whole child. If we think of our kids in one building differently than we think of our kids in another building, you know what I mean, specifically K six and seven twelve when I'm talking there? Like, that's not a whole child focus. All we, we, they're all our kids. And uh, when they change schools, um, it should be a seamless transition. Um, and so I think there's a lot of room for improvement there. So I think it's a little bit connected to just this evolution um, uh, that the district has um, recently, you know, gone through. You know, you, you were several different school districts, now you're one district, right? Like, it's just an evolution of that same work. I think we're, we're working really cohesively just to make the edges touch between all of our work. And so, um, yeah, so I think it's that. I think in the other areas too, it, it's a little bit more, I can articulate a little bit more how that root cause. We were operating from specific data sources when we identified the root causes under personalization and academic proficiency, proficiencies. And we were talking, I think, more in platitudes and generalizations when we did the Safe and Healthy Schools. So we weren't necessarily responding to a specific state, data. But it was like, in general, when we work, we're not working as cohesively as we could.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Laurie, and then Bill, or?
So, will the C, the Continuous Improvement Plan be on the website?
Sure.
I think it should be. It's a really good idea.
Sure.
Um, and? I, I'm in general getting a, a really bad feeling about the Agency of Education from all frickin' aspects. I can hear it at the, at the Vermont School Boards Association. I hear it here. And did I, I wanted to just make sure I understood what you said. Did you say that the state data for our S P A C is not available? Meaning, we got our individual S P A C results for our students back, but we do not have a comparison to the rest of the state?
Right, so they launched a new statewide launch studental data system last year.
Last year meaning two thousand eighteen, two thousand?
Over the summer, over the summer, I think, and um, it seems like it's just been so ongoing. They had a grant that's now five or six years, a ten million dollar grant to get, to, to get prepared for this transition. And it was still the eleventh hour and, and um, it was time to flip the switch. And there wasn't a lot of, um?
Well, let's hope it goes okay.
Planning. And so, yeah, so um, part of, I mean, part of what was flawed was the census data from fall and getting all that information in. So they have to verify through that census that the data that we have from uh, the um, S P A C folks is actually our data. So they do that by taking and making sure that these are our kids and that is their data. And then they close the loop and give that back to us. So because the census data was never accurately completed in the statewide launch studental data system, they couldn't verify that statewide data to push it back out to us. So they weren't, um, you know, they, they weren't com- comfortable sending out any kind of comparative data to say, this is how we do compared to C V U or compared to, you know? They don't want us to use the data in that way. So we have our own data. We know how our own kids did, but we can't compare it at the statewide.
And when, what's the timeline? Three months ago.
Yeah, I mean, it's equalized people, everything is in there. It's supposed to be the one-stop shop for all things data. So theoretically, it's a brilliant idea. Because right now, they give us data and then they ask us for it back. So, so really, they should just be able to go into this data system and extract what it is they need from us, say like free reduced lunch. And, you know, we give them that data on other, in other reports, but then we sort of have to synthesize it and give it to them differently in a different database, because there's so many databases. So we're constantly uploading information into multiple databases. This, the theoretically, this is great. It'll be one place where all the data lives. They can get what they need out of it. We can get what we need out of it. It's just not coming to fruition in the way that they anticipated. So it's why we worry about the chart of accounts. It's why we worry about one seventy-three, Act one seventy-three. Because nothing else has, has gone as planned. Um, so I think, you know, they're aware of this. They're not denying or disputing it, but it doesn't fix the problem. So, um, so we don't have our state report card. We don't have any of that information. And yeah, equalized people's change today.
No way, really?
Yeah, yeah, really. Because they're still cleaning up the data every time, every, that's?
And are they finalized the equalized peoples?
Nope.
Well, they'll say final and then they'll come out with a revision.
Okay. Um, and then you also said that they were supposed to come up with a climate survey?
Yeah, so I'm not really sure what happened with that. Um, but I just think that all things, being what they are at the agency right now, they just said, we're gonna wait one year on this. So it wasn't that they were coming up with one. They had contracted with um, a company that produces these types of surveys. Again, you want a good survey. You want, um?
We, we've contracted with someone, so we've paid someone, but we don't have a survey. Is that what you're trying to say?
No, I, I can find out more details as to whether or not money changed hands. I'm not sure. Um, but they had identified, I know this much for sure. They had identified a survey that they wanted to use and then, and then decided not to implement that this, right? Probably because the results were gonna go into the statewide data system and it's not ready to, I don't know. But um, they postponed it a year.
It also could be the bandwidth that they have up there. They've got a lot of positions open. They just don't have the staffing.
Yeah, nobody, nobody works there anymore.
Are they hiring?
They are.
They are hiring. Anyone?
Lot of open vacancies.
Does the state have to approve our, I know we have to approve it, but do they have to approve it as well? And, and um, when, when my department has to get something approved by people higher up, they tell us we have to get it in by this date and, and then it comes back sometime in the future.
Exactly. So what, what happens when we submit it is it's considered for, for the purposes of spending our grant mon- money substantially approved. Um, unless we put something crazy in there, like we're buying new cars for everyone on staff or something like that.
You put the state's goals in red, and so it, it's clearly fine.
So, I mean, as long as they are within the intent of um, the intended use of Title One, Title Two, Title Four, we can consider it substantially approved. And then we are authorized to spend. And there's kind of then a back and forth that goes on sometimes for a couple of months with the agency to perfect the plan and have it just what they need it to say for federal purposes. And, you know, they, it's usually they want more information about something. Um, and so it's, it's a matter of clarifying what, what we mean. So sometimes we're deliberately vague. Because we um, we want room to modify um, and add specificity as we go along. Basically, that's what happens. And then they kind of call us on the fact that it's a little vague. And they wanna know more specifically what it is we're, what, what we're after.
So we approve this tonight presumably, and then it, you submit it to them at the end of this week?
Yeah, when's it due? Coming right up?
June thirtieth, but the sooner we get it in, then the sooner we can enter. So it all goes into the G M S, which is the Grants Management System. The sooner we get the C I P in, then the sooner they'll open up our ability to enter in and start writing our grant strategies. So, and technically, your, everything needs to be submitted, both grant and C I P by the, by June thirtieth. But if you front-load and you try to get that C I P in sooner, then you'll have access sooner to then get your grants. But keep in mind, we don't know when we'll get grant allocations, which is how much money we actually get in each of our titles. Last year, we got grant allocations the third week of June, and the grant was due the fourth week of June. So you can, you know, we'll, we'll front-load as much as we can. Um, but we're gonna tentatively be waiting on those allocations.
We gotta hold how much money we can.
Bill?
So you've got, um, I, just like Tom said, I think this is really great. I, I appreciate the work that you put into it. You've got some great goals. And then you've got some sections beneath that where we, we spell out some of the ideas that we think will get us to those goals. And then we have indicators of success. And that's the area that I'm thinking a lot about, because it feels like if you stick around in a school district long enough, it feels like every couple of years we'll go through something. This'll be the new list of, this is what's gonna solve all our problems. And there are, I'm not saying that we, we should always have goals. We should always do that. But what, it often feels like we don't do is then look back and say, wait a minute. Did all this, all these changes we made, all these new policies, procedures, new training, um, did they actually have the intended effect? Did they have any untoward effects? And so looking at the indicators of success, I mean, we're, we're asking our, our faculty and our community to come along with us on a number of changes that are aimed at really awesome goals. That I don't know how anybody could disagree with the, the goals themselves. But when it comes to the strategies, I think we really have a responsibility to, to stick with these indicators of success and be able to prove that we had the intended effect. Or if we didn't, to have the courage to admit that and talk about how we're gonna modify the goals or modify our strategies to those goals. So looking at the indicators of, of success, some of them feel, many of them feel like they're process indicators, which is fine. I think you have to have those. But to the extent that you can apply real data to these measures, I think you should?
Yeah, can I just jump in and talk about the difference between the um, section of the document? If you look and see, the fourth column is called Data Collection Evidence for Evaluation. Um, that is the data source we're looking for to measure these strategies. When you look at indicators of success, those are more broad indicators that we're on the right track. They're not necessarily the data source that will, so if I said to you, I would like to lose weight.
Right.
The in, an indicator of success might be that my clothes fit better. But the end of the day, the scale is going to tell me if I'm successful or not. So there's a difference there.
Good, okay.
So the, the indicators of success might be the reasons why I wanna do it in the first place, so that my clothes will fit better. And what a funny thing to set as an example, but sometimes it feels like?
No, but it's sound. It's concrete. Yeah, because in the end, it'd be great if we could say, you know, some people are, have questions about whether we're headed in the right direction in some of these areas. And it would be nice to be able to, to be able to say in the end, here's the data that we used to evaluate whether we did this. And we think based on the data that we, we were successful, or we weren't. And so now here's what we have to look at.
And at the end of the day, that's why I said, remember what we're here for. We're here to improve the academic outcomes for our students. Those are measured in ways that are predefined largely.
Right.
So at the end of the day, if what we're doing isn't leading to those outcomes, then we're doing the wrong work.
Yeah, exactly. You said it perfectly. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for the work on this.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other, nope, Mark?
So to combine the two pro- yeah, presentations, Beth was reminding us that some of us are monkeys and some are elephants and some are fish. And then we look at local, state, national assessments that all sound like trees.
Yeah.
Those assessments take into account savannas and oceans or is it really just, at the end of the day, even though we're doing all this great stuff, we're assessing it?
Yep. That's fair. So I don't have the presentation up there anymore, so, but I can sort of, in broad terms, talk a little bit about the difference between E S A and No Child Left Behind. So No Child Left Behind and those grade level expectations were so locked in that, um, and that's all they cared about, reading and math scores as assessed by the No, um, the N S R E and later the kneecap assessments. Um, that's it. Now, when we look at those metrics of school quality, they're coming in. They're looking at your, um, kids' access to flexible pathways. They're looking at those other component parts on that final slide, on the last few slides. They're not just looking at your reading and math score. So yes, that's a big part of it. Um, but also there are other college and career readiness benchmarks that we're looking for and looking at, um, including accessing flexible pathways, um, dual enrollment, um, early college, some of those other pieces. Um, so there's, it's, it's not, we're not all the way there yet. But I would say the qualitative element, and the survey data is in there. That's one of the metrics. So, you know, we're not all the way there yet, but there's more qualitative components to that school quality review than there used to be. There used to be no, who cares? It was just, who cares? If you didn't have monkeys, all they had was trees and you were out of luck, you know?
You didn't have trees.
Yeah, so?
So we can see the savanna and the ocean from the trees.
We can, we can.
It's not quite.
We can. And we know that through supporting students in, you know, I, I could go on and on about this. But, but when you broaden, when you take the focus out from that grade level expectation view and you broaden it to proficiency, you are redefining what it means. So we measure how, how strong a reader you are, not by the text level you read, but how well you comprehend and can make sense of what you're reading. So there's much more latitude in that for, um, you know, ability is less important than um, the skill that you're getting um, in, in school. So it used to be all about that grade level piece, and now it's, can you think? Can you communicate? Can you problem solve? And those pieces um, are how we measure proficiency. So?
So, can, sorry, I, I've asked a lot of questions. But, but I, I think coming back to what Bill was asking, will this then become the, the, the document that you will use with us on a consistent basis? Will you be referring to this document with us to say, here's what we've done, here's why we're doing it? And as you can see, both in your policy, blah, 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 but also in our Continuous Improvement Plan, um, on page four of the Continuous Improvement Plan?
Yeah, yeah, we'll link things back if I had more time too. I thought about this today, because I thought about John. I thought, you know, it'd be nice to see the policies that connect to some of these pieces. They're not all on here, right? But there are some connections between our existing policies and this plan, so?
But so in other words, we should be keeping this document alive in our brains?
Yeah, that's the goal, that we all are, right? That we didn't just do it for compliance, but that it's really driving us. And it's not the be-all, end-all. It, we, we can improve this. It can be better than it is now, but it's, 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 it's pretty good.
It's beautiful.
Thank you. Alright. Do you wanna hear more from my report?
Thank you, yes. Uh, yes, so?
I, I don't know if there's other questions. Thank you, Kim. Um, I wanted to talk about policy B one, B thirty-one, which was Teacher Supervision Evaluation. Um, so I went back into Joanne's report from last March, and I pulled out the same table that she had done last year, and I reproduced. I had the principals contribute to um, the same this year. And then I think it was John asked a really good question, that, yeah, this is great. And we see that, you know, you've done this, but, but how are we, how are we paying attention to quality? Um, was a question. So I think that that brings up a really good point. I do think at one point in the system, we were really interested in just compliance. Are we doing teacher supervision and evaluation?
That was last year.
And that was, that was the hardest part of the work. Now we can say, I think we're, we're doing it. We're doing it consistency and consistently. And we can focus on quality going forward. So I know from working with the administrators this year, um, I, I think it's time for us to pay attention to the tool we use. We use right now the Danielson Framework for Teaching, which is a pretty goo- good tool. They don't love it. But I maintain that, um, we are? But I maintain that, um, we are, if we aren't first trying to get everything we can from that tool, then I'm not sure, um, you know, if we're do, what I mean by that is if we're doing it consistently, if we are using the tool in a way that's calibrated, you know, it doesn't matter who, who the administrator is. When they see instruction, they can define it using the same terms from the tool. I don't think we've done a lot of that work. So, um, that's the hard work. Um, is talking about instruction as administrators and talking about the kind of feedback you would give teachers in order to help them improve. That's the hard work. So switching the tool isn't, isn't gonna get you there, right? So we could really invest in this tool and do some of that hard work and do some of that shared learning together, and then decide we don't love the tool, and that's good, that's fine. If that's where we end up at the end of it, that's fine. Um, but that's some of the work that we're starting, um, this summer at our admin retreat, and we'll be doing that throughout the year. It's nice to get to a place to clear your plate enough to be able to, that's the important work. And it's nice to get to a place where we can start focusing on that as an admin team.
From your report, man?
Yep, yeah.
Sorry.
It's a meaty one. All these policies are getting reported out on this one report, so.
From your report, um, I, I, I thought, I've, it was very helpful, the discussion about the different levels.
Yes.
Um, the, the really salient shift seems to me between levels two and levels three.
Mm-hmm.
Levels, level two, your teachers are basically fine in their evaluation. Level three, um, they need something.
Corrective, yep.
Do you, so you, you have this really helpful chart about, uh, the people, about the teachers that have completed the full evaluation cycle.
Yep.
Um, can you tell us movement between level two and three, level three and two?
I don't have that data. We don't capture that in that way, so we'd have to go back through the plan and, I mean, each evaluation. I, I could extract it by going back through each evaluation, I suppose. But, um, I don't, I don't track that information right now. Um, I don't.
I mean, I, I ask, because my question is, it would, or at least the way I'm thinking about it is that it might provide a more of a global view of how, of what the consequences of the evaluation are as opposed, as opposed to the individuals, you know?
We would have to be careful, too, because it can be somewhat personally identifiable when you're talking about such low numbers. If I were to sort of report out, we have, I, I'm making this up, this is not necessarily true. But one level three teacher at Addison, like, you know, there's only a handful of teachers at Addison, like. So we wouldn't necessarily wanna be in a boardroom talking about levels of performance, um, of teachers in schools. So, um, I could talk about it more in terms of percentages in the system, so.
That was what I was thinking of.
Like sixty percent of the teachers are at level one, and forty are at level two, and zero at three and four, hopefully, right? Um, but, yeah, so I don't currently have that data.
That I was thinking about than, than, than.
And split out numbers, yeah. Fair, yep. Um, security camera review. I realized I wasn't doing that, but then when I went back and, and, uh, so I should be reporting this to you as it happens. But truth is, we haven't really had very many issues. Um, so there was one issue. And I'm reporting it to you, so I'm in compliance, so, um.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions? So you want me to just keep going through each section? D four, Title One Comparability?
I mean, I think it's.
Why did they deny our waiver?
Okay, we wanna get to the end. So, um, apparently Gloria and I were looking into this a little bit today. There's some date component part, because it happened so long ago in the year. I forget when that smoke happened here at the high school. Was it October?
Right at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, we could have our, we could have decided on our own to figure out a way to make up that day.
Within the year.
Time, like by turning an in-service back into a student day or something like that. So they, they just feel like, i- if it had happened only just last week, then they would have considered it. But since it happened so early in the year, so, yeah.
Well, now we know.
That's actually a rule.
It's, yeah, so I should have probably known that.
Does anyone have any other questions on the remainder of Sheila's report?
Just a quick, as, as you move toward, um, surveys for subsequent years.
Yep.
I think there are folks who would love to at least have the opportunity to learn more about that when it comes up, like what the survey design is gonna look like. I, at least this folk will, would love to know more about that when the time comes. If there's, if there are any opportunities for, um.
Well, as I said, next year it's probably gonna be issued by the state, so.
She says with full confidence.
And I've seen that tool, and it's actually pretty good. Like, I like it.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I wish we could have done it. I'm disappointed.
Along the survey note, Sheila, will you be reporting on the surveys that are happening now to the?
Yeah, we have to figure out what that looks like, so we're gonna be looking at that at our next admin team meeting and figuring out what it, what it looks like. And again, it's baseline, so, um, we'll figure out how best to summarize that. Um, and we can report back to you, too. Yep.
And will we, if we wanna drill down on more details, of course, we don't want, we don't need names. Uh, if anybody, I don't think there were, there weren't opportunities, I don't think, to type in individual names anyway. But if we want more drilled down data beyond just the, a summary of it, will we be able to get that?
Um, hmm, I don't know. I guess I'll have to think about that, on what you're really getting at there. I mean, and it would be a matter of, I guess, the board deciding the more.
Yeah, right, of course. I just, my preference would be more data rather than just a summary, but that's just me speaking.
John?
I have one more, about the PBGRs.
Yes.
So, um, so this is, this is important. Um, this is the first time we've had procedures on this since we became a district. Um, the reason is because Joanne just didn't get it done before she left, which is fine. And Sheila came in at the end, and it was just, and we didn't have, we lost our, our Director of Learning. Do you all remember all of that? So this is a big deal, that we actually have procedures, like some things that we can talk about and read. Um, that, that's the first time, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I don't know that we have any procedures that are missing.
I think we have them all. This was the last one.
I think that's it. So congratulations to the district.
Yay, John!
So I, just a couple of quick questions here. Um, so one is, um, all right. According to the Vermont State Board, each secondary school board is responsible for setting graduation requirements in accord, in accordance with some rules.
Yep.
I want, I think it's important to know whether, what you have written here, whether we're following the rules. Will you help us understand whether we are doing what we're supposed to do?
Yep. So, um, the rules basically say that our, um, areas of proficiency have to align with state and national standards, and they do. Or the state standards approved by the Vermont State Board of Education. And then they say that our graduation policy can't be based on credits. It has to be based on attainment of proficiency. And it does, it does do that. So that's, I think, the check that you're looking for.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean.
And these are the specific areas, these are the specific areas identified in Rule Two Thousand and in the education quality standards. These, English, math, these are actually spelled out in that, um, in that document.
So, John, were you asking about footnotes in the procedure?
Um, yeah.
Yes.
Cause, cause, which are not yet.
I don't think he necessarily was. That's good.
But it would be great to have those footnotes, too.
So here's the last one. Um, so our policy says something like, information regarding PBGR implementation and assessment is provided to students and parents at least annually. So how, how are you gonna let everybody know about the implementation and assessment of these PBGRs?
So, um, about the implementation or about the outcomes?
Um, just, w- w- one or the other. I think the implementation one is written in the Program of Studies.
It is in the Program of Studies. It's also in the handbook, the parent handbook. And then there will be a new document that's developed called the Grading Guide to help crosswalk between, um, the middle level had it this year, for example. So it's a guide to help assist in the interpretation of, um, grading and reporting in the system.
Cool. And so.
That'll be in the handbook?
Uh, it'll be its own document, I think. The Grading Guide will be its own document.
So by the time that we start next year, everybody in the district will know exactly how the PBGRs will be implemented completely, and we'll all know.
For secondary, so we're just talking about the high school, yeah.
Perfect. And we'll all know exactly how they're gonna be assessed.
They will have access to that information.
Graded and reported, yes.
That's great, okay.
Which is different than how they'll be assessed.
Wait.
Why?
Well.
Well, how they'll be assessed may vary from classroom to classroom, right?
The structure of these.
What we're measuring is have students met proficiency or not through the assessment that was administered in their classroom setting. So how they'll be assessed is a matter of classroom practice. So it's not a matter of policy or procedure. Yep.
Cool. I, I think it's a big deal. It's important that, um, I, I wanna say that in part, we don't, we didn't know what the implementation and assessment of our, of our PBGRs were. In part because we just didn't, the board didn't get it done. We did not get that policy done. And so we now know exactly what that will be and how to understand it. So, thank you.
You're welcome. I think it's really important for me to say, like, uh, I didn't swoop in and like create this. Like, this is the work that the high school's been at now for a couple of years. All, all this is, is a summary in two pages without footnotes of what, what has been already in process. If that makes sense, so, um, yeah.
Thank you. Are we good with the superintendent's report? All right. Wowee! Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we are moving on to the business manager's report.
Okay, so now we get to talk money. I don't think that's nearly as exciting. Um, so I don't know, I, hopefully, everybody read through their business manager report. I did it a little bit early, 'cause I had to go away on a conference, so, um, it wasn't at the very last hour. A lot of times I like to wait till, till, right before I please go out to you guys, so I can have the most up-to-date information. Um, nothing has really changed, uh, as far as your financial reporting is going. Um, I noted on the finance, on the, uh, business manager report that the, um, last call for any expenses being kind of, uh, communicated to the business office uh, was Friday, the seventeenth. Um, the, uh, admin assistants have a little more time after that to get it all into the system, but that's the deadline for everybody turning everything in. Um, so we'll have a pretty good idea, I think, uh, at the June meeting of, um, how our finances look, um, when we run the next report. Um, also, I noted in my report about the negative balance in eleven hundreds. It's being caused by your health insurance, HRAs. I also indicated that it's because we're encumbering a hundred percent, as if everybody will use every dollar of those dollars. And they are not likely to do that. Um, but without any kind of statistical data, we don't always know exactly what that'll look like. Looking at what we've seen so far, we think it's about eighty-five percent usage, um, which is higher than what we had originally hoped. Um, but it still actually means that these numbers will rebound a little bit when we get actual claims in there. Um, as we all know, uh, the administrator is still working on a lot of those claims. So the longer we wait for those claims reports to come from the administrator, the better the data will be. So if, uh, we're, my plan is to wait until right before that next financial report comes out, so that, um, we can get those posted. Um, I'll also mention, uh, the information about the copier and the supply, the copy paper and the supply bids. Uh, we're gonna, um, vote on that later in the action items, but I just wanna give a little information. Um, we had a group that met with, uh, it was Mark and Lori were included in that, um, in the business office on Tuesday, the fourteenth, for the bid opening. Um, at the time, we only had one vendor out of the five that we specifically solicited, um, that showed up and gave us, um, a full bid for both copy paper and office supplies and school supplies. Um, we later learned after I went on my conference that there was another bid that came in. It was, uh, in a package on, uh, the front table in the office, and it was not clearly marked that it was for, um, the office and school supply bid. Um, even though that is the case, um, I took that apart today. And, um, I had actually some staff working on it while I was at the conference to kind of compare those two bids. And then I sent out a, um, email this afternoon to the people that were involved in the committee and the bid opening to give them all the information that I learned from, um, looking at that other bid. Basically, the summary of that is that, um, as I said, the other bid did not clearly mark that it was, um, that particular bid, which was clearly noted in the RFP, that it needed to be marked that way. Um, we, uh, also noted that they only, the second vendor only bid on school and office supplies and not copy paper. Um, we tallied up the two hundred and sixty-three items that were individually cost-rated on this bid. Um, and between the two, the savings on the one that we actually accepted as a bid was seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So we actually would have had lower cost on all of those items. If there were any items in the bid between the two that either vendor did not quote, we left those out of the comparison completely on both sides, so that it was fair. Um, we also noted that one vendor had a thirty-five percent discount on all other items that weren't included in Two Sixty-three, whereas the other had twenty-five percent. Um, unfortunately, that swings us the other direction, because, uh, the bid with the lower percentage actually was the one that we approved and knew that we had. Um, unfortunately, we have no way to gauge how much dollars that really means, because we don't know who has the higher-cost original items i- in their catalog. You know, that would be a comparison that would be impossible. Um, but the one thing that we did note, um, that is, to me, the highest priority um, is that one vendor could not guarantee the three-day delivery that we required in our RFP. Um, they, uh, crossed it out and put seven to ten, uh, ARO, they call it, which my understanding means, um, after receipt of order. And so that, um, pretty much would make me decide with the vendor that we chose, um, because we think it's pretty important to our staff that the delivery is fast. You know, when they decide they need an item for a classroom, they need it. We struggled last year with the statewide bid, not knowing who our vendor was for a long time. And that slowed up the process for everybody getting their things in. Um, and the vendor was not able to really accommodate the speed at which all of us needed to receive our goods. So in the end, uh, the choice and recommendation from the committee, and still even after reviewing all of this, is WB Mason for our, um, both our copy paper and our school and office supplies. Um, and I think that is it, other than what is already in my report, unless people have specific questions.
It's, and you already have audit dates lined up, which is amazing.
Preliminary and, um, the finalized.
Fabulous. Yes, Lori?
Do you know anything about the power school? Is anything moved?
No update from, they have not. Um, there's been a lot of talk after having, uh, people testify to different committees and the legislature, that they seem supportive of a delay for either power school and the chart of accounts, but still no solid definitive answer. They haven't closed the case. It's all in the miscellaneous education bill, and that is still open, and it's not, um, been resolved.
Could, just to, for the television and everybody, we, like, what's the problem? Would you just tell us what the problem is? I mean, just like, I know, we've heard it a bunch of times, but like.
Could you remind us, just?
Like, what's the big problem?
Well, there's two big problems. So I'll, I'll try to, I'll try to summarize it. Um, the first problem is we have a uniform chart of accounts that where all school systems are supposed to use the same, uh, chart of accounts for coding all of your financial information. Um, that's a great idea. There again, I think Sheila mentioned something earlier about, you know, the state being able to go in and pluck data out of a system. Well, that is the design of a uniform chart of accounts. Um, if all school systems are using the same exact financial coding system, um, the state can jump in and just pull data and have statistical information about all of us and compare us all evenly, equally. Um, it's a great idea. Um, it has not come into fruition as well as planned. Um, the business rules that the, um, agency of education has preliminarily set up to go along with this chart of accounts that tell you what you can and can't code where, um, are not even complete at this point. And yet, we were supposed to implement that chart of accounts by July first of this coming year, like, a couple months from now. So that's a problem, obviously, because people in school districts are making decisions on their own about where codes should be and what things should be coded where, um, and how to do their code. And in the end, what that's going to result in is that no one is really gonna have a uniform chart of accounts. And that the data going in there is gonna be different for everybody. So that's the first problem. Um, the second problem is, uh, the state also, likewise, for the same reason, trying to be able to go in and pluck data. The second problem is, uh, the state also, uh, likewise, for the same reason, trying to be able to go in and pluck data, um, put out a statewide bid for a software program for the financial system to be used uniformly across the whole state in all the school systems. There again, great idea. At first, it was supposed to be optional, um, and that if you opted in, it would get paid for, for the school district. Um, and then somewhere along the way, the legislature decided it was mandatory, um, so that everyone in the state of Vermont had to convert to that software, and then they put deadlines on it, um, based on whether or not you were a merging district or not. There was different deadlines for that. The RFP was selected, a vendor was selected. It's Power School e-Finance. It's not a system that anyone here in the state of Vermont was using. Um, many of us are in another, uh, various other programs belonging to Tyler Technology, Nemrick, I think, is another, and Harris Solutions. So it means everyone in the state of Vermont in school districts has to convert to the new software in order to make this happen. Um, and now that they've had some, school systems already tried to convert, there's been, um, flaws and issues along the way that have arisen because the, uh, system itself does not appear to have all the functionality that many of us already currently have in our existing systems. And so, uh, the state, um, officials of business managers are testifying to the legislature, writing letters, talking to representatives, everyone we possibly can, to try to delay the implementation and the requirement of that software, just sheerly hoping that the modules will continue to be built. Thing that doesn't work properly or adequately in that system is fixed before we all enter into using that system.
Cause I think the key thing there is that the system isn't built. It's.
There's certain pieces of it that are just not built.
They went with this vendor, there's not yet a product, so they're actually developing the software. Whereas there were products in consideration that are already functioning, they're already in existence.
And I think this, I think, to be clear, this particular product does have functionality that is used in other states. There are other states that use Power School e-Finance, uh, just not Vermont, and Vermont school systems and our financial data and the requirements of the financial data that our state requires us to give back to our state means that our system needs to be different. It can't operate the way New Hampshire does, or the way Virginia does, or whatever. There is differences between Vermont and the data they require, and so therefore, the system has to be able to accommodate different requirements. And their system may accommodate what those other states need, does not accommodate what Vermont can currently do in the systems we're currently in.
Thank you. Alright, we are running pretty far behind here at this point. No, it's not you, trust me.
But information.
But, yeah, this is all really important information for us to have. So you also linked a facilities report. Could you, in like?
So I didn't actually link that, but I did, I have seen it. Um, I see that that was on here. So that is basically a report showing, um, the results of our project. I think, uh, the most important thing I could say about that is, um, we're being used as almost like the showcase for EEI. Our project went very smoothly. We are reaping the benefits of the energy efficiency, and, uh, and it's right lining up with what we had hoped to see. Um, the project ran well. It was under budget, so basically, that's all the data just kinda rolled up. Um, and it's my understanding they'll be doing like an audit like this, but they're using us as kinda like the showcase project, which is a pretty big thing.
Ken couldn't be here tonight, but if you have questions, he was wondering if you would mind emailing them to.
Okay, so email questions to Ken, yes?
Um, just an observation. I mean, the, the report that's linked in here, though, um, i- is showing a number of things that are out of compliance, that aren't running as expected.
So I was reading it correctly, okay.
Yeah, so there's, there's a number of things where it shows out of compliance, and I think what the important piece that I understand to, to that nature is that we are in that flux here, where we're trying to figure out where the systems can run at their optimum performance and tweaking based on that. So this is basically an audit to show us where those items are, and I believe that even, you know, as we've gone through, any items that were already identified have already been being dealt with. Um, but this is just like a snapshot in time to tell us where are those areas, and can we keep on tweaking them? So that as we roll into the next year, when they do an audit again, we'll have one full year of real data at the optimum times. Yeah.
I mean, it looks to me like this is a, a monthly report, and.
Yeah, this is the first one I've actually seen, though.
Um, for April. And I, I can't remember, maybe I've, I've looked at the same one twice now, but it, you know, if that's a different one, maybe that's the only one, and, and.
This is the only, this is the only one I've actually seen. Yeah, I've not seen anything like this.
Okay.
I was wondering if some of these compliance concerns were because of, um, evening and weekend use of the schools that maybe wasn't accounted for initially?
We can ask and follow up with you.
We could ask, yeah.
I guess the short of this, it'd be great to see the next report with a shorter list.
Yeah. Or smaller percentages, right?
Well, or possibly actual dollars as compared to percentage. Okay, the, the fan was running at eighty percent more than it should have. Is that three hundred dollars worth of electricity, or was it fourteen cents?
Well, it.
Then it, it just, having it eighty percent doesn't really tell us whether or not that was a massive waste and needs to be con-
But as an anecdotal, I mean, at one point, the time clock at Addison Central School got screwed up. And so I would come in for school board meetings in the evenings, and all the fans are gone. And by my calculations, it did cost Addison Central School several thousands of dollars to have that out of whack.
Okay.
So my concern is that, you know, there, there's money that's being squandered here, and it just, you know, the hope would be, we have this data, and I, I'm sure that Ken is acting on it. Um, it'd just be great to see, uh, progress.
Okay. Okay.
I think I got your questions. I've, um, sending them to him, so.
Okay, so any additional questions on that report we should be sent to Ken, or to Sheila to send to Ken?
Maybe through me.
Okay.
That way we can make sure that the whole board gets the answers.
Right, okay, that would be great.
Yeah.
Alright, excellent, thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, principals' reports. Did any, did any of you want to add anything or highlight anything? Yes, Kathleen?
No, I just wanted to add, uh, this goes to print the week before you receive it, so we have weeks time. I just wanted to have a quick public statement out on TV. Before, I know, shameless. Um, then Addison Central School is pulling a gently-used book drive. Our goal research tells us that kids at the elementary level should have three to five books over the summer that they've chosen and self-selected. And so while we, we have some donations, we're just having a book drive with gently-used books. They can be dropped off in the coming weeks, and then students will have an opportunity to choose those three to five books to take home with them over the se- over the summer. So not worry about returning them. If they choose to, we'll do it again next year, but the idea is just to really increase their voice and choice, um, and books that they can have and keep and hold. So if you can contribute to that in any way, again, we're not looking for people to go out and purchase books, but just to recycle ones your kids may have outgrown, or ones that you've had stored in boxes for years and years and have never used, or those are still, Nancy Drew is still good reading. So any of those older books, box card films, or any of those things, please feel free to share them with us, and it's gonna go directly to students' hands. So, thank you very much.
And FCS is having one as well.
Oh, are you?
Yeah.
And for Gen's.
Yeah.
All of the elementary schools.
Very old-looking books.
All the elementary schools.
Have you guys put anything in FBF, Front Porch Forum?
No, I don't use that as a means of communicating. It's on our Facebook page.
George?
Um, I, I saw, um, numbers of expected kindergartners or known kindergartners for Addison and Ferrisburg, but not for, for Gen's Elementary? Do, is there a number we know?
Friday, right, you're.
Yeah, we have bridge on Fridays.
Okay, thank you.
We have an anticipated number, but frankly, that's never right. It's hard to corral the five-year-old.
They're slippery.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else for the principals?
Just, uh, with the high school, the interesting data point from DSAC and the changes of how many students are applying for the FAFSA competition. Are those numbers consistent with how many kids apply to college in general? I mean, we're not gonna expect a hundred percent, cause a hundred percent are gonna need federal aid to go to college, so are these low because they're not doing the paperwork, or are they low because we're not getting that many kids that are interested in needing grants?
Well, pretty much the FAFSA is something that everybody who needs to go, who's going, planning on going to college, uh, takes care of, because it, it's even used in the determination of merit-based scholarships as well.
I, I get that. I just meant, what's our percentage of kids going to college?
It, it, it runs about the same. It, it's, we've got, you know, it depends on the cohort, and I'm happy to pull those numbers. I've done it for passports, um, in past years. I don't think I've done it the last couple of years, but, like, I could, I could go through my, my last.
I was just unsure if this, this was, saying it's sixty percent, it sounded like, well, that's about this percent of kids that would be doing it, cause that's the only percent that needs it. If you're not gonna head off to college, then you're not gonna file, file the paperwork.
Yeah, it's kind of a chicken and egg sort of thing, you know, uh, the student, it, I mean, FAFSA and the state really tries to encourage all students to fill this out, because you, you know, later you can't, you can't go to college. Sometimes students don't fill it out because they think there's no way financially they can go to college. And, so, if, if there are, if they're pre-assuming that they're not gonna go to college, and, and not doing the paperwork, then, um, they lose out the, uh, out of the opportunity to find out that this could, it could be very affordable.
So do, do we push this, or should we push this, like we do free and reduced lunch paperwork, where we want a hundred percent to fill it out, even if you think you're not gonna use it, even if you don't need it, do it anyways?
It's, it's not just a form, though. You have to have tax information. You have to, you're doing it in October now.
I, yeah. Yes.
You know, you, you may not be filing, you're doing it in October, and you don't start filing until, you know, January, so it, it's, uh, and it's a con- a conglue of the process. Who here's done the FAFSA?
Oh, God.
Who here's glad they don't have to do it anymore?
It's a lot easier than it used to be then.
It is, and they have streamlined it, or they've done like a, they've done a, a.
Oh, yeah, IRS.
It doesn't take hours.
For some of our families, that's a real obstacle. And for kids who don't have the support of parents in making those choices, it's practically. Um, so we, we do push it. We have the, the DSAC people come in, um, we host these FAFSA nights. Uh, it, it is difficult, but, um, I think, uh, you know, we want all kids, I really want every single one of our students to apply to a college. I really think that's really, really, that's an important goal to shoot for, um, just to go through the process, because they have the support to go through the process here, and later they'll be doing it on their own. And doing the FAFSA is, is part of that, um, process, so. I, it, but again, I get this data all the time, and I happen to be getting it at the same time I was writing my board report, so I thought it was, you know, an interesting data point.
Thank you.
But I, I would be happy to pull together a report of our, um, you know, couple, three, four years comparison of how the cohorts change and where they go.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, uh, there's no student report. So that brings us to the board reports. Um, I have no report, but I think everyone got in their inbox today, a message from the VSBA about resolutions. And if we want to propose any resolutions to the VSBA, they are due to them by July fifteenth, which means that this board would need to approve any resolutions at our next meeting on June tenth. So I guess this is all homework for anyone who wants to think about this. If there are things statewide that you think that the VSBA should work toward on our behalf, then we can create, uh, a resolution. Um, so I guess I would encourage you to write that or draft that if you have, you know, or get together in, um, less than six of you at a time, to draft something to bring to the next, or, you know, to, to link into the next agenda for June sixth, or, sorry, June tenth. If that's something that we have an interest in doing. If there's a need, there may not be a need.
I think we talked about this last year, about the gun law, didn't we?
Yep, we talked about.
Didn't we talk about the gun proposed?
We talked about weapons, we talked about, um, uh, the idea that we're not allowed to carry forward funds. Um, we've now talked about, um, you know, a variety of initiatives that have not come to fruition, so, you know, I think there are certainly some areas out there that we could get behind if we wanted to, so.
Agency of Education works better.
They need them all.
Alright, um, so, so thank you very much to all of the committees that have submitted lovely written reports, so let's cruise through these.
Can I just make a quick announcement? It's an addendum to the board report. There was just an email from Chris Oxley saying that the Team Phoenix Capstone Challenges this Friday, and for those of you, if you haven't gone, it's really fun to go see what the eighth graders are doing.
Yep, that's where they show off their projects and.
That's where, right, it's really helpful to see that process, so, thank, thank you for indulging my addendum to the chair report.
Of course. Alright, so, um, Christina, did you wanna add anything to your career center in part? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Lori?
Yes, BA. Um, I didn't get a written report, sorry about that. Uh, there's, we've had two meetings, and, um, there's a, lots of stuff going on. Um, one of the things I think came out at the other board meeting that I wanted to say is that the Vermont School Boards Association is not doing the negotiating for the statewide health contract. It is being done by a committee that was, um, appointed by the, uh, at least our group is appointed by the VSBA. It is not all VSBA members. There is a, uh, email address, if anybody wants it, anybody wants to email them. There is, uh, the, uh, Vermont NEA has a, uh, website that they put out about it. Hmm, oh, there's a seminar coming up on June first, Saturday, if any of the board members want to go to something on Saturday, June first. It's a crazy time of year, but they would love it if anybody wanted to go to the.
What is it, the topic?
It's a, it's essentially the, um, Essential Board.
Oh, right, I got that email too, yeah.
In a one-day seminar, um.
Yep.
Uh, they're promoting that, and, um, yeah, they're, and it's from ninety-three and Berry, and the professional development, so they're gonna put an emphasis on community engagement. And, uh, I think that's about it.
You have a question for Lori?
I understand that the people representing the boards walked away from the table due to the fact that the NEA wouldn't bring just the five people they were allowed.
They filed, uh, unfair labor practices.
And there's been no resolution to that.
There's been no resolution. Oh, they are also, uh, VSBA is supporting a study committee to take inventory of our school facilities, because we haven't had construction funding in over twelve years from the state, and no, but, like, we don't really even know what our facilities are. How they're doing, how they're faring. So, uh, the SBA is supporting a, a study committee to find out how our facilities are doing, before we jump down that, descend down that road, or go down that road for school, um, capitalization funding.
Well, thank you, thank you for that. Okay, Community Engagement Committee, their summary report.
There it is, yes. Um, I apologize for the length of the report, but the committee felt pretty strongly that, um, we wanted to share as much of the raw data that we collected with all of you as we move forward with strategic planning. Um, so we brought, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at it, but we sort of categorized them into three different categories related to the specific questions that were asked, and this is basically a culmination of a year's worth of committee work, this report.
And from the forums and all of the surveys that went out.
Correct, yeah.
This is all condensed, so really, I mean, what, it's, uh, eight pages.
But, you know, we bulleted them, so hopefully they'll be a little easier to read. And, you know, we had a lot of duplicates as you, as you start to read this, and in a lot of the areas where people were making suggestions, especially about building configurations, there were multiple people saying, do this, do this, do this. So, we didn't repeat them over and over again. We just consolidated, just so you know. And then, um, I believe we, we are putting in, gonna have an article in the Addison Independent, hopefully coming out soon, that's summarizes the work that has happened in, in community engagement over the year.
So basically, the process that, that led to this?
That created this report, yes.
Great.
Any questions or happy to meet you.
Thank you, yes, so this, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
This is great information for us, so this we will use when we get together on the thirtieth to, um,
Great.
begin some work on how to move forward.
And then the committee, we're not gonna meet next month, we're sort of gonna just wait to see what.
Right, cause there'll be some work to do in the fall, probably, okay. Right, because there'll be some work to do in the fall probably, okay. All right.
Uh, facilities, we met sometime, sorry, early, the start of, start of May. There were three things we talked about, um, as you saw in the report. One, and I speak to the, to the television now for all of our viewers, don't park in the fire lanes at any of the schools. It's been apparently a pretty big problem for a long time and Ken's really concerned about it, quite rightly. And, and so, um, the police have begun ticketing, uh, and, and we should do all we can to encourage people not to park in the fire lanes. And, uh, I know that, uh, we, we talked about some strategies around this, newsletters, Google, Google Earth pictures about don't park here, don't park there.
And handicap spots, if you're not handicapped.
Oh, and, and handicap spots are, like, that's so lame.
That's a bigger ticket.
There's signs, you know, there's signs.
Right, I know.
Are the fire lanes designated, can you, because.
The yellow curb.
Signs, yellow curb.
Signs, don't park here, yeah.
I mean, like, is this a fire lane out here?
Yes, yes.
So, don't park in the fire lanes, people, just telling you.
No one got up to move their cars.
I'm skipping to the third thing, which is that, uh, we are beginning the process of developing a long-term facilities plan. And by we, I mean Ken and Elizabeth, who are doing the, the hard work. And they were going to be coming back to us in the fall sometime so that we can begin to review the document.
That's so wonderful.
The inventory that, that will have been putting together so that we can think about, uh, the next series of, of things we need to budget for and to plan for.
Right.
And the second thing, uh, on, on my report, um, is about the draft procedures, which hopefully you looked, you, you, you were able to see about the way in which we can use, um, the funds that have been set aside for capital reserve, capital improvement issues. We don't, I, I, and when I wrote this report, I believe, I thought that we had to, uh, vote on them in an action item, but apparently we just talk about them and make sure that they're, that, that they're okay. So we drafted them, we, we talked, I drafted them, we talked about them in the facilities committee, we made a few changes. If you have any questions or concerns, please let me know or let us know.
And, um, so essentially this procedure is what the board and the administration would follow to access funds from those capital reserve funds to, to fund whatever projects.
That's right, and so there are some principles that, that are articulated for when we use them, price ranges, time, things, you know, don't use them for things that are going to be, uh, broken in five months or, or, you know, within three or five years. So they should be, they, we, we are going to try to privilege large capital items.
Did, is there, is there a policy around the capital reserve fund or it's not a policy?
No, and that's what we, when we initially started talking about policy versus procedure, we did some research, we talked to, like, the auditors, we talked to other business managers. And basically the general consensus was that setting aside of capital funds, money or reserve funds is already limited in statute enough so that you don't necessarily need a proceed, a, a policy on it. But how you actually decide as a board to go about and use that money is really more of a procedure and not a policy.
I guess, I, 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 that makes sense. I was just thinking that we have most of our procedures on the website linked to the policies. There's no policy for this one to sort of be linked to, but.
We are working on a fund balance policy.
You might be able to link it to either fund balance policy or possibly, there's another one, um, the, you know, financial management policy. I don't remember what number that is. But you may, might be able to link it to that one, okay.
But we did, we did talk about that.
We did, yeah.
Right, that we don't need yet another policy, yeah.
That it was more important to have a procedure, um, if tomorrow something happens.
Right.
For example.
Exactly.
Which it won't, it won't, I'm just, you know.
Not because, it won't because we have a procedure.
That we can just, we should think about just revising, like, F twenty or twenty-one, one of the, whatever those, and just have another line. There's a lot, there's one that has a lot of bullets and just another line. The, the capital reserve funds will follow the procedures. First, and then, and then done.
Right, that way it's kind of comes full circle. Yeah, okay, good. So John will remember that, I'm sure. All right, uh, Finance Committee, sounded good. You had a small member, that sounds fun. Policy, policy, uh, do we want to review this policy, F forty-four?
Yeah, yeah, we should, because it does not need to be, um, it can't be voted on yet. It has to be warned for, a new policy needs ten days. So, but this policy and a couple of others were brought to us by Elizabeth. And, uh, because the audit letter mentioned these things, like cash handling, okay, and some other things. And she brought it to the policy committee and we started to read it and said, Tom had some good questions, but most of us couldn't understand it. So we sent it over to the finance committee and the finance committee did understand it. And they have brought forward this policy, policy F forty-four, which we think will go a long way to ensuring that, uh, everyone in the district knows exactly how to deal with money or cash when they get it.
That sounds very important, yes, George.
Uh, I just had a question with respect to authorized personnel. Just in recognition that I think sometimes students are collecting cash, like, for basketball games.
Yes.
Is that true? But they would be district employees, so they would fall into this.
So that second sentence where you see it says authorized personnel are, it does say employees. So we could change that to say, what would we say? We'd say employees, it'd have to be other people, volunteers. We'd have to list them, but basically, well, not their student.
They're not getting paid.
It could be employees or other authorized personnel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure there's a conflict here, I just sort of want to bring it up.
And the idea is that, so that second sentence is supposed to cover that. It's anyone with a vested interest in the intended purpose for the receipt. So like, for instance, let's say it's, what that means is, say it's a student activity, they're, they're having an event. You wouldn't necessarily want someone collecting, you know, maybe the food service person collecting money that was for, their food service at the high school and they're collecting money for the athletics at Ferrisburg or something. Like, they don't have a vested interest in that particular item. Whereas if it's a student or a custodian of that student account, which is an employee usually, usually a teacher or someone like that, collecting money at an event, they have a vested interest. They're the ones who are in charge of that student activity account, so they're collecting the funds for it. So we had to leave it somewhat broad because authorized persons would be whoever is involved with that event versus just saying it always has to be a bookkeeper or a principal or a... So we were trying to make that more broad by saying anyone with a vested interest, but we could change it to say not just employees.
Yeah, we definitely have volunteers and students that, I mean, if you're getting down to collecting cash at fundraisers.
What should we call that?
All right, well, let's just, authorized personnel are persons
Persons.
of the district who have a vested interest in the intended purpose of receipt, I mean, we would be good. And just for the record, George wasn't at that policy meeting when we didn't know what we were talking about.
I know.
Now he's here asking his good questions.
That's good.
Sorry.
Well, I think we can fix that for the next time.
But just think, thinking, you know, my daughter worked to collect, uh, money for the basketball games. I wouldn't describe her as having a vested interest necessarily in the basketball game, but.
Right.
Was she, was she being paid to do that?
She was being paid, yes.
That's her vested interest.
Maybe that's her vested interest.
There's her vested interest.
So in that case, she probably was considered an employee, but certainly as some of a particular, like, the elementary.
Some people might volunteer and collect money because they're part of basketball.
Fundraisers.
I don't know if they're employees, I don't, I think that's a line we'd have to be careful of. Are they employ, are they, yeah.
They're not always employees.
They are sometimes.
Right.
Sometimes they are, but sometimes they're not.
Authorized persons.
Yeah, let's not cross that bridge on this policy, but I think, I think you got the right language.
Yeah.
Right.
You could say employees or volunteers.
So just substitute employees with a.
With a broader word.
A broader word, thank you.
We can do it.
We'll, we'll leave the exact vocabulary up to you.
No, I don't think so.
We, we're going to do it in June anyway.
Because it's discussion, that's fine.
It is still ten day, it just needs to be worn ten days. Yeah, thank you, George. Okay, um, Strategic Planning Committee, all right. So, we have dissolved, but I will, on their behalf, introduce this document. So we've linked the, the Board Strategic Work Plan draft here. We have three goal areas that were decided on by the committee. And those goal areas actually link back to the three areas in our unification articles. It's important to keep in mind that this is a plan for board work. And it's als, and also important to keep in mind that this is a starting point for us to think strategically and longer term than just year-to-year thinking. So it's, you know, it's a working document and it's a start. I don't know if people want to read through the goal statements here, uh, if people have questions or... Yes, Larry?
I have questions.
Okay.
So we refer to Addison Northwest County, is that?
Where?
That first paragraph. Uh, sorry.
The most significant future in Northwest, in Northwest Addison County.
Northwest Addison County.
Is that what you want to say instead of Northwest Addison School District?
How about no cap on Northwest?
I, I, I just thought we were, are we referring to the dis- school district or are we referring to the county?
I think it's like a broad statement that our schools will impact all of Northwest Addison County.
The region, I think it was just.
You did want the region, okay, that's fine.
It's not just necessarily our district.
It seems so different from normal, okay. And, um, the, the other question was, why are we only getting, um, I, I just felt like there was an annual report for curriculum. I just seemed like that should be at least quarterly.
Uh, which, where is this, this is two, no, one.
Goal area one.
Goal area one, one B, annual report of curriculum.
Policy report.
Right, so, so the policy, D twenty, states that we'll receive an annual report.
Okay.
Uh, uh, of the evaluation of the curriculum, right?
Systematic evaluation of all programs within the curriculum, policy D.
At least annually.
At least annually, I, 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 I mean, we haven't had a curriculum coordinator until this year. We haven't had a full-time curriculum coordinator the entire time this district has been in, until this year, since we've been here. And I, I, and I heard curriculum, it would be a great idea to do it, talk about it more often, is what I'm hearing, so. I, I don't want to take this on.
The thing is, this isn't supposed to be right down in the weeds. This is a strategic plan, it's, it's an overview, it's, it's not, not nitpicking. It's, boy, what can we make as a decision to help move the district forward? It's, okay?
So also it is a working document and we can, but, I mean, we can certainly, we will revisit this when we have our, um, work sessions. But I think that certain, I mean, it doesn't hurt to just put in there at least annually.
I think, I think too, there, there are two parts to this, I would also add. One, in particular, this first goal, we were trying to link to the way we understood the continuous improvement plan to being developed. So I think there's, as I was reading the continuous improvement plan, I recognized a lot of the things that we were trying to point to, so that these, those, those ideally are, are parallel working documents. The other thing that I think we were trying to do was to both look at what we're doing and, and push it a little bit further, but not, but not try to create unreasonable expectations for either the board or the administration's work. You know, call, if we called for a whole slew of new reports that, that we kind of want to know, but is going to require a ton of labor to get, that doesn't help anybody because we don't have the capacity to, to do it. So it was, it was a balance between those, those kinds of things.
I'm getting comments and requests from the audience that they can't access this. Can someone help me? It's, it's open to sharing and. Okay, thank you.
Did you share with anyone at A N W S U with the link and not, and not anyone?
I, I didn't see any other option, okay, you got it, thank you.
I'll try.
It is funny how A N W S U still has this weird place.
I mean, I guess we'll talk about, I mean, we'll talk about it down here below when we vote on it. But, so I'll just wait, I'll wait till we vote on it, we get.
Well, I think.
Or do it now, I mean, I would just say to everybody here who wasn't at the meeting, at the, at this, at these meetings, you know, we, we spent like eight hours every, you know, four times, really trying to think about what would be something that we can all live with, you know? And what can, it's a lot of people here, you know, everybody has probably some interest that they would like. And I can certainly live with this document, I think it's going to be really helpful. We haven't had a strategic plan, eh, since we've been here. In part, I think that those are just problems that arose after, with the transition of a new superintendent. And we have one to help, help lead us through this, and we did. And I think we have something that will be helpful to us. And I'm, I'm glad that it links to the, um, to the articles of, of, um, unification, and it's an extension of those and I think it'll give us, it'll guide our conversations together in a way that I think will be really helpful, so. I am, I'm going to vote for it, I hope you will as well.
Should we read through the goals? Should I read through the goals or should we not waste the time? They're here, everybody's done that, okay, okay.
Well, I mean, maybe for the thing.
Well, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
I, I would say them right into that camera, please.
Can do it quickly. So we, we have three goal areas that align with the Articles of Unification. Goal area one, student success, equity and quality. Three goals beneath that are, insu- ensure the district's continuous improvement plan aligns with the federal Every Student Succeeds Act, which advances equity and high economic standards. B, receive annual reports of curriculum development, coordination and assessment within the district, including implementation of proficiency-based graduation requirements. And C, develop system of professional development, supervision and evaluation that supports innovative teaching and learning to support all students. Goal area two, asset management, efficiency and sustainability. A, determine best use of district facilities to support educational goals of all students and student enrollment at a cost that is affordable to and supported by the community. B, develop a long-term facility maintenance plan. And C, ensure equitable distribution of and access to educational resources. And the third area is board community relationships and communication, accountability and transparency. A, implement communication plan outlining various levels of communication. And B, communicate district priorities with governmental and community organizations. So we did try to touch upon all the areas, but. All right. If we're good with that for now, we can move on to our action items.
I move that we approve the minutes of May thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Second?
Any edits or comments?
I sent Laurie an edit this morning, removing an extra apostrophe.
Okay, apostrophe removal, yes, Laurie?
I was listed as being there, but I wasn't there.
Oh, that's right, Laurie was not there. I'm glad you noticed that.
You were there in spirit.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so all in favor of approving those minutes with those edits, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, bills and directors' orders?
I'll move to, uh, approve the bills and directors' orders, uh, for the accounts payable in the amount of four hundred ninety-nine thousand forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents for the payroll of one million two hundred fifty-four thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. And the student accounts of fourteen thousand two hundred and three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Second?
And everything was in order?
I did the reviews and...
I did the reviews, and my few miscellaneous questions were brilliantly answered, and so I'll as well.
Wonderful, all in favor of approving those bills and directors' orders, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, donation.
I move that we approve a donation of fifty dollars for V U E S from Neat Repeats.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Neat Repeats, all in favor of approving that donation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, hirings.
I move to hire Randy Sweeney for Point Five Middle School Counselor, and Stacy Raphael, CVA General Educator, I'm not sure what CVA means, but.
It's the.
Champlain Valley Academy.
Champlain Valley Academy, it's an alternative high school. We supply, CSAC supplies the clinical services for that, for our, our students, and Addison Central and Mount Abe School District, where we work as a collaborative toward this, but last year we took over the academic services, because we felt we would, the students would be better served by working with educators that we selected, so it's a cooperative arrangement that we have. So Stacy actually has worked in this position for the past year, and then she reapplied for the same job. We're not able to offer successor contracts, 'cause they're really a wanna, it's, yeah. Yeah, it's this consortium-based instructor, but it seems appropriate for you to acknowledge the hire, so.
So we aren't actually hiring her?
Well, we pay her, we do pay her, and then we have a reimbursement model from the other two sites.
Oh, I see.
So we're paying for a third of her salary, essentially.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Yes.
Thank you, okay, is there further discussion, and both of these are one-year-only contracts?
Correct.
Isn't, in that, next time, in the next report, your report, you, we tell us what
Yes.
what is, we're supposed to think through when we approve these, when we vote for them?
I will. I will. Yep. I will include that in my next report.
Okay, all right, all in favor of these two hires, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, uh, policy F forty-one.
Oh, sorry. I'll, uh.
Any more motion?
Go ahead, John.
Uh, I move that we approve the changes to F forty-one, bids, contracts, and purchases, which also includes conflict of interest.
Is there a second? Laurie, seconds, any discussion? Okay.
Oh, only, just, just, this is important, the policy committee read it, and the finance committee read it, and both approved, so.
And George was there?
No, he wasn't, any other questions?
Okay, but he approves now? All right, all in favor of.
Hang on, just one second, I wanna say one more thing, the, the last line of the policy says the employee will not solicit or accept any favor gratuity or anything of monetary value for such vendors which exceeds a hundred dollar value. We kind of went back and forth on that a little bit, because people receive pens and swag, et cetera. We just wanna, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, that we thought a hundred dollar value was a good idea, we're not wed to it, but.
Yeah.
What if it's a thousand pens?
That makes sense.
Pretty high, with the state, I can't even get like a free mug.
We'll give you a mug.
Aw, thanks, Tom. Some other, I'll just, okay, hey, that, that's good, I mean, some other districts had a hundred and fifty, and some other, so we looked around, and you know, like, and we thought a hundred was.
At least you came up with a dollar amount, I think that's good.
All right, all in favor of those revisions, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, supplies and paper.
I move that.
Oh, go ahead, Tom.
I move we approve the bid for supplies and copier paper.
Second.
From.
W B basis.
And it was, it's not like an amount, right?
No.
Okay.
No, 'cause you can't always set an amount.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
I think, I think we already heard about this, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that, committee. Uh, okay, continuous improvement plan.
I move that we approve the district continuous improvement plan.
Second.
Any further conversation?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, why are we voting on this, I don't understand why.
Have to by statute.
You're legally obligated to.
Which statute?
Well, it, it's a contingency of our, our funding parameters to, we can't apply for the grant without your approval. So you have to approve this plan in order for us to apply for the grant.
It's in the state board rules series.
Statute authorizes the board to follow a rulemaking process to create the rules, so the rules aren't in statute, but the statutes empower the rules. All right, I mean, sometime down the road, just tell us what the statute is, please, somebody, so we, I mean, we know. I, I believe you, I just would like to know, I mean, I think we should know. Um, and then, so it's not done, you, you all just said it wasn't done, you said it was in draft.
Well, it's continuous, it's done, but it's a continuous improvement plan, we're committed to what we've outlined in the plan. And we've identified the strategies that we will be working on. So as, throughout the school year, there are sometimes carryforward funds that become available, so money we didn't spend in this year gets added to our allocation, and sometimes, strangely, we're offered money that we didn't see coming. So there's like a, a different allocation that comes, so there are times when we modify and amend the plan. But chances are, it's gonna link directly back to one of these strategies, and we'll just increase the amount of money that we're, you know, funneling toward that particular strategy, not necessarily, you know, drastically depart from what we've committed to in this plan, if that makes sense. Like, for example, one year, we didn't realize that we were gonna have Title IV funding, we hadn't had Title IV funding for a very long time, and all of a sudden we had, you know, a pretty substantial pot of money in Title IV funding, and we had to think, okay, well, what, what are we allowed to spend it on? And we had to kind of create a new plan for that, so if that were to happen, we would be amending it throughout the year.
Okay.
But presumably you'll be coming back to us next year
Yes.
with a revised version of the plan.
That's right, yep.
Okay, sorry, I was looking for the rules, but no luck. Okay, all in favor of approving the continuous improvement plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
Abstain.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Okay, uh, strategic work plan.
Move to adopt the board's strategic work plan.
Second.
Any further conversation on that? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? All right, Bill, I hope I got your preferences here, okay?
I would love nothing more than to be on those two committees.
I move that we appoint Bill Clark to the policy, to the community engagement committee.
I'll second yourself.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor of appointing Bill to those two committees, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
Oh, I mean, aye, yes.
Okay, all right, um, we need to go into executive session to discuss a contract issue.
So I move that we go into executive session for contract discussion, following one, VSA three thirteen A one A.
Inviting.
Inviting this, both, or just the superintendent?
Just the superintendent.
Just the superintendent. Anyone want a second, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, okay, thank you.